The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Dennison City Council is now in session. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Rachel McClure, Children's Minister at the Park Avenue Church of Christ.
Will you pray with me? Father God, we are so privileged to be part of this community. We are so blessed because around the world tonight, not everyone is. There are communities in grief and loss, there are communities that are suffering natural disasters and war. But Father, tonight, we can come in peace and we can gather here and we can collaborate to make decisions for the well-being of this whole community. Father, your scriptures teach us how to live in community, how to love our neighbor, how to listen well and help us to respond thoughtfully to each other. Lord, tonight, give us wisdom so this town will be a light on a hill, one that brings you glory, one that others will say, "Look and see what God has done among them." In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
This evening, we are honored to have the Boy Scout troop 403 here to lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Gentlemen, when you're ready.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much. And welcome to the other Boy Scout troop that is here. I guess they're here observing their city council? All right, very good. Thank you for coming and thank you, each of you, for being here tonight. It really is important to us that our citizens come out, they're engaged, and they're informed because this city belongs to you and that's what we want you to know what's happening in your city at all times. At this point in time in our agenda, we set time aside for citizens to speak on any item that is an action item on the agenda. In order to speak, a request to speak card must be completed and turned into the city clerk prior to reaching this point in our agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes and must address action items that are on the agenda. These are comments only. Please do not expect dialogue between the citizen and the council or the citizen and staff. Comments related to the public hearings on the agenda will be heard when that specific agenda item is heard. And for tonight only, we will reserve public comments on the item 5A regarding fire fees until after the staff has given their report. Now, I did notice, and I want to be sure that this is clear in the future. I did notice that when you fill out a card, you're requested to put your name and your address because comments are intended for citizens of Dennison. Some of you have not put your address on there. We will allow you to speak this evening, but in the future, please understand that you're... It is required that you put your address on your card when you request to speak. Most of the cards are requesting to speak regarding the fire fees, so we will address that at the point when we address 5A. We have one, Roy Reed, who has indicated he wants to speak on the consent agenda. The consent agenda is not an item that's on the agenda this evening. If there is a particular item on the consent agenda, then you need to identify that.
I did, for the meeting, the minutes, meeting minutes.
The meeting, the minutes of the meeting?
The prior meeting, yes.
All right. And I ask you to state your address for the record.
I'm not going to give my address. I'm not required by law to give my address. You don't need my address. And for clarification, you do not have to be a citizen of this town to comment and give public comment to this council. Anybody can come up here and talk to this council. You receive federal and state funds, so therefore, anybody can come up here, okay? That's not going to fly in the future, so we can get that problem taken care of now, especially when you...
Mr. Reed, you have three minutes. Would you like to speak to the agenda item or do you want to just make an impression on all the people in the council?
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'm going to wait and speak on the fire service fees. I'll go ahead and pass over one thing now. Y'all have made it very, very clear. You don't want to talk to the public and you don't want to answer their questions. So we'll let that reflect on you, not on us, because we're here to get answers and you don't want to answer them.
Mr. Reed, you can sit down now. Thank you. Item three, consent agenda. We will pull item 3C from the consent agenda and address it independently. With the exception... There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 3C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on law enforcement officer inter-local agreement between the City of Sherman and the City of Dennison. Chief Gudjel.
Madam Mayor, Council, Mr. Rex, come to you in reference to this. This is going to be about the construction project on Highway 75, the 75 project. This project is going to stretch from FM 1417 to Loy Lake Road South in the City of Sherman. Will be conducted by Zachary Construction as expected to last approximately three years. Traffic control will be needed on a routine basis with numerous officers and patrol vehicles at any particular time. Like the City of Dennison, Sherman does not have available personnel to staff these resources alone. So the City of Sherman is entering into an inter-local agreement with area cities, allowing law enforcement officers from those cities to work traffic control. The city will be reimbursed those charges from Zachary Construction through the City of Sherman. There will be no cost to us at that time and they'll also be reimbursing us on vehicle use. I can answer any questions.
Questions for Chief Gudjel?
We are currently waiting some legal clarification, so we're hoping that this gets through. The construction is going to start pretty quick.
Questions? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the law enforcement officer inter-local agreement between the City of Sherman and the City of Dennison to allow the Dennison Police Department to provide law enforcement officers and mark Dennison Police Department patrol vehicles for traffic control during the US 75 construction project and authorize the city manager to execute the same subject to finally review and approve.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crawley, a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the code compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 915 West Morton and take action. Mr. Lay.
So we're on 1401 Flowers, right, Mayor?
Uh, no, we're at 915 West Morton.
Okay. Sorry about that. Oh, okay. Okay. I'm Mayor, Council. On January 30th, 2020, Charles Strong, the estate of Charles Strong, Carleen Strong, the estate of Carleen Strong, and Tristan Large were given notice to repair or demolish the structure at 915 West Morton. The owners have failed to comply with the notice. This structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 5-833 H, N, and O of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. The property was worked for minimum property standards in May 2019 with no results. An administrative search warrant was executed on August 15, 2019, to confirm the unsafe interior conditions and the demolition process was initiated. On October 1st, 2019, code compliance and public works staff completed an exterior cleanup of the property due to its visible conditions. The appraised value of the improvement was $21,464 in 2019. The unpaid taxes totaled $221.21 and have not been paid since 2016. There's been no active water service at the structure since December 7, 2017. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is not weather tight. The structure is not fit for habitation. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the code compliance department. Staffers requesting counsel to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. We'll tell you in the pictures here, this is the way the condition was left. This is what it looks like now after staff had to go in and just remove all the debris just for the neighborhood's sake. Questions from council?
Questions for Mr. Lay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 915 West Morton a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
There is a motion by Councilmember Greenleaf and a second by Councilmember Crawley. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing to receive testimony from the code compliance manager on the unsafe condition of the posted structure at 1401 Flowers and take action. Mr. Lay. We have some shuffled slides, don't we, Robert?
Yes, it's got me thrown off a little bit. Okay. On January 28th, 2020, Chris Vickery was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at 1401 Flowers. The owner has failed to comply with the notice. The structure is unsafe in accordance with Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 5-833, H, L, N, and O of the Dennison Code of Ordinances. This property was worked for minimum property standards in 20 July of 2018. In November of 2018, the owner did obtain a demolition permit. The permit expired in May of 2019 with no action taken. The appraised value of the improvement in 2019 was $57,105. The taxes are current. There's been no water service at the structure since April 2nd, 2018. Code compliance has received many complaints about the condition of the property. The structure is open and evidence of vagrant activity has been observed. The structure is a nuisance in the neighborhood. The structure is not weather tight. It's a fire hazard. The structure is not fit for habitation. A record of the violations, notices, and unsafe condition of the property are on file in the code compliance department. Staff is requesting counsel to declare the structure unsafe and order its removal. Questions from council?
Questions for Mr. Lay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir. Come forward and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Curtis Ironsides, 2605 Thousand Oaks Drive. Okay, so this is going to be a pattern and it's one part of the story of the gentrification of Dennison. This action is a way, or the ones to follow this, is a way of increasing people's property, or increasing the property values of Dennison, so-called to the benefit of citizens, but really to the benefit of house flippers, people seeking to increase rents and otherwise making it more costly to live in the City of Dennison. This is all kind of under the facade of saying that this, to make Dennison more beautiful, but beautiful for whom? For the citizens or for outside investors with no stake in our communities? House flippers that will buy low and sell high? Or is it really just for so middle-class affluent, soon-to-be residents of this city can push out the poorer sections of our neighborhoods and our communities? And that'll conclude my comments on these actions.
Thank you, sir. We are happy to have citizens speak on behalf of these agenda items. We will have decorum in this council chamber. Discussion from the council. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to declare the structure at 1401 Flowers a nuisance and unsafe to order demolition and to authorize staff to proceed with the demolition process.
There is a motion by Councilmember Doty and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution outlining the rules and regulations related to implementation of ordinance number 5043, fees for fire service. And before I turn this over to staff, I would just like to make a few comments. You know, there are some really good things about social media. You know, I got on social media so that I could keep up with my grandchildren. But there is another side of social media that... Their sole purpose is to spread disinformation. After we had our meeting two weeks ago, I had several citizens reach out to me and my first paragraph in every email that I answered was, "We are very glad to have citizens reach out when you have concerns about our city. We'd like for our citizens to be engaged and would you allow me the opportunity to sit down with you and discuss this one-on-one?" There was not one citizen that took me up on that. So if you're really looking for the information about what's going on in the city, don't look out to websites that spread nothing but disinformation. Allow us the opportunity. Our city manager, any one of these council members, or me, will sit down with you with any concern, whatever it is, within our city. So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Wanted to give a little bit more background and context before we consider the resolution for tonight regarding fees for fire service. The ordinance that was on the books up until two weeks ago was adopted in June of 2013 and simply provided that fees for fire service may be set from time to time for fair usual and customary fees set by the City Council of Dennison. A kind of a generic provision in our code that said it's possible to do this if you establish fees. And so when we proposed ordinance 5043 to make, to actually establish those fees and then clear up the language a little bit, there was another provision in there that said the city manager may make rules and regulations as far as administering and collecting the rates that were established. Not untypical. That's kind of the, you know, the city council makes policy. The city manager's responsible for helping implement that. And so just wanted to provide a little bit of context around that. So really, the resolution that's before you tonight is really step two of the process for establishing fees for fire services. Mayor, you talked a lot about kind of misinformation that's going around and one bit of information I wanted to share so folks kind of know because we probably have some taxpayers in Dennison here. And so one bit of information that I've shared is that for our current fiscal year, this is fiscal year 2020, we will collect about $9.3 million in property tax revenue that can be used for maintenance and operation of the city and 1.3 million for interest and sinking fund, basically debt service on bonds and other leases and debt instruments that we have. And if you look at the funding of our core public safety functions, so Dennison Fire Rescue, Dennison Police Department, our dispatch, 911 services, animal services, municipal court, code compliance, those real core public safety functions, to run those alone in fiscal 2020, the budget is 12.9 million. And so while, of course, we're grateful for all the property tax revenue that we are able to put back into the community and help serve the citizens of Dennison, it simply doesn't cover all of the core services that we provide. So what's missing from this list, of course, is parks and recreation, streets, and a whole other gamut of departments that provide services to citizens. And so really, other revenue sources help relieve the property tax reliance for delivering those core services. So anything that we can bring in to help offset that is a benefit to the taxpayers. And so consistent with your intent of the original ordinance, which was to create fees that would not burden resident taxpayers of Dennison, we've really outlined in the resolution, I think, kind of three core principles that we're proposing. For one is in dealing with residential property. So when Dennison Fire Rescue responds, it's usually to a structure or to an accident involving an automobile or other vehicles. So in the case of residential property, the rules propose that fees will only be imposed when the property is located outside of city limits, meaning that the property owner does not pay taxes to the City of Dennison. When the incident involves an automobile or other vehicle, fees will only be imposed when the responsible party is not a resident of Dennison. And really, the only way we can check that is determined by the registration of the vehicle, if it's registered in Dennison or not. And then finally, non-residential property, we're proposing that fees will be imposed there. And really, two reasons there is that when you're dealing with commercial or industrial property, they're most likely covered by insurance. Your business owners have insurance in place that would likely have coverage for response for an emergency, like we're talking about. And the other part is that a commercial or industrial accident, something unfortunate happens involving non-residential property, most likely it's going to require a bigger response from Dennison Fire Rescue. So those are really kind of the three categories and how the rules propose to handle each of those. We did carve out a few provisions. One is if there is an incident related to a crime such as arson, we will want to impose fees in those cases so that we can collect restitution, if it's possible, through the prosecution of that case. And then in cases where insurance coverage doesn't exist and fees will be imposed, we still want to, on a case-by-case basis, be able to charge those fees where it would be in the best interest of the city from the responsible party. And I want to make it clear that that does not apply to resident taxpayers as it's outlined above. So again, if it's residential property in Dennison, no fees will be imposed. It's only outside of city limits and same with automobiles or other vehicles. So we wanted to make that clarification in kind of this two-step process that we started with at the last city council meeting and really make the city's intentions clear on how we want to administer the fees for fire services. This is a new thing. Even though there was an ordinance enacted in 2013, the fees were never established and so we have not projected any revenue for this. We really want to test drive it and see how it works. Our existing EMS billing company, Emergicon, will basically implement our rules and help us implement that process. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions from council? We have a number of cards from citizens wishing to speak. The first one is, I believe this is Jerry Wren. Is that correct, sir? 800 South Maurice, and I'm sure not... You want to talk about, I'm not sure what the segment was.
Okay, I just got to stay real quick and then you can talk to me, okay? I'm Jerry Wren. I live at 1800 South Maurice in Dennison, Texas. You say you're not going to bill residents for the fire department calls. However, you're going to charge the insurance companies for the non-resident calls. A little background here. In 2013, I was transported from my residence to TMC by Dennison EMS. After all was said and done, I was sent a bill for $2,000 or so dollars for the ambulance ride. This was because my insurance was not accepted by the company that Dennison uses to bill the EMS. Okay, that left me not only paying my insurance premium every week out of my paycheck, but it was $50 a month for about 18 months to pay off that bill. I asked about this, but between work and the reason I had to go to EMS, I didn't have the time to follow up on it and nobody at the city did. Okay, of course, the city never got back. Okay, the insurance said not in network. So I was paying for the insurance that the city didn't or wouldn't accept for whatever reason. Does anybody else see a problem with that? Because you're talking about running another third-party insurance handling this or billing? Okay, now about the proposal for the fire department. In two days, two weeks, two months, or two years, you can come back and amend this ordinance any way you want to. You got to do it, just do it. Then, when you can charge citizens for the fire services like you do the ambulance service, what's next? How about the police for 911 calls and resulting investigations? We know they already do it for false alarms and other things. They've got other things that they get back on, false reports. Like it or not, we're going to pay for it. It doesn't matter whether it comes out of our pocket by paying a bill, raising our insurance rates, an addendum to our policy, or a whole new policy that does nothing but protect us from the bills bound in the city for covering an emergency response. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wren. I apologize in advance if I say this wrong. Anja Osman?
Right here.
Okay. State your name and address for the record, please.
Anja Osman, and under House Bill 2840, I am not required to give my address, nor will I. Clapping is decorum.
Clapping is not decorum, ma'am, and you are not going to disrupt this meeting. We are happy to have you here and speak as a citizen, but this is the place that we do the citizens' business and we are not going to disrupt the decorum of this meeting. So now, we'd be happy for you to speak to the fire fees, which is what you've indicated you'd like to speak about.
I do. So, under House Bill 2840, a government body may not prohibit public criticism of the government body... government body, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. So you're talking that you want to cover the $2 million that's going to be missing from the city coffers, but that you haven't planned on how much these fees are going to add to the city coffers. Doesn't quite add up to me. You've put 45 million into Main Street for what? It's still got bricks that come up and just damage cars, potholes. As the other person that came up before me said, insurance will hit twice. Did nobody do any sort of research on that prior to passing this bill? And you said also that you would like to hear from the city residents and stuff. This is an election year, why didn't you put it up for a vote? That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis Ironsides, do you still wish to speak on the Dennison Fire Rescue? Well, the Dennison Fire Fees, the Dennison Fire Rescue is not on the agenda.
The fees.
I'm sorry, sir?
The fees.
You want to speak on the fees? Okay, come forward, please.
You're not a business officer, is that what I intended?
Okay. So for the past couple of weeks, the city council has discussed the prospect of lowering the tax of Dennisonians by privatizing the city's emergency fire services. The council has praised the ordinance's opposed benefits, but they have yet to discuss its costs, which have a direct impact on the people of the city.
Excuse me, sir. The fire rescue is not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to the fire fees, you are welcome to do that.
Yes, ma'am. I just apologize because I said this wasn't going to be as precise as I had written it, but it's regarding the fees.
Okay, so you may speak to what your feelings on the fire fees. Please keep it to the fire fees.
Okay, so, as I was saying, but this raises the question, where will insurance companies get the money to pay for the city and its fire emergency fees? The answer is the citizens of Dennison, who already pay the premiums to the insurance companies, as well as pay tax to the fees that they will already be paying anyway. The burden of any increase in the cost of these premiums falls directly on the citizen who used the fire emergency or will be charged for these fees. So in other words, the burden of the cost the council says they are trying to alleviate is still our burden to bear. The actual party the council is looking out for to alleviate of tax burden is outside investors of land and capital, as well as potential affluent home lookers seeking to buy a house here. These are the early stages of our economic displacement. This is but one part in the larger story of the gentrification of Dennison, as its citizens find it more and more costly to live here and have no other alternative but to move out and destroy the communities that helped make Dennison the great place that it is.
Thank you. Terry Brazil, is that the right last name?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I just live outside the city limits, I'm just concerned why, you know, outside the city limits, you're wanting to charge us for fire fees when we pay taxes just like the, you know, people in town. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. Roy Reed, fire service fees.
I have specific questions I have written down regarding these fees. First of all, was there any cost assessment done to find out how much it's going to cost to have the billing done, and who's going to do the billing? Has that been done?
Yes, we know who's going to do the billing.
How much is it going to cost the citizens for the billing? How much is that going to cost?
I'm happy to answer that. And Chief Lloyd, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. They take a portion of the proceeds, so I think it's...
That's good enough. I just, you know, they're going to do a portion of. So the next question is, have you done any assessment to find out how much you expect to raise with these fees?
Mr. Reed, if you had listened to Mr. Rex's presentation, he said that the income from this has not been identified.
I intend to make a point on that, is y'all don't even know how much it's going to raise, and yet y'all want to go ahead and vote on it and implement it. So obviously, due diligence hasn't been done. You get up here today and call it a two-step process, when really what it is, is you got the backlash, and now you're trying to cover your rear. That's what it's all about. So next question is, and this is a question that someone wanted me to ask, let's say a Sherman or Pottsboro residents in the city of Dennison gets hit by a Dennison resident in a car wreck, you going to bill that resident of Pottsboro Sherman and not bill the resident of Dennison, even if it's the fault of the Dennison resident? How is that fair to people that don't even live here? I mean, this is pretty ambiguous in enforcement, if you ask me, you know. Ordinance is supposed to apply to all people equally, which I'm not trying to advocate, hey, you should charge us, because this whole thing's ridiculous, but, you know, is that the case, is that what the case is going to be? I'm asking a question.
I understand that you're asking a question, and I also told you from the beginning there'd be no dialogue. So you can speak to your objections to the fire fees, and we'll move forward.
Do I need to read your news release where you said if you have questions to come? That implies to me that you're going to answer the questions, ma'am.
If you've got questions as a citizen, Mr. Reed, you can make an appointment with the city manager, or with me, and we'll be glad to sit down and clarify all the questions that you have.
I have more questions. Before I get to that, I tried to ask you questions after many other nights, and both of you walked away, and you ran away and got the police chief to leave me alone. So I tried to, and very astly, I approached you, Madam Mayor, may you answer a couple of questions? And you very rudely said, "I'm not answering your questions," and walked away. So if that's how you're going to treat citizens, why should we come down and sit down in your office?
Actually, Mr. Reed, I did not have a conversation with you at all. I did walk away from you.
Are you denying answering me?
I speak to all legitimate media. You were there speaking to me as media. I have no obligation to speak to...
Ma'am, I'm there as a citizen as well. You can't just brush me off because you want to pick one or the other.
You can't be both, Mr. Reed.
Oh, yes, you can.
You can be a citizen, or you can be the media. If you want to talk to me as a citizen, we'll make an appointment, and we'll sit down and talk. Now, do you have anything else to add to this agenda item?
Yeah, conveniently, when he showed that the city manager make rules, kind of left out the mental section where it says that they can be inconsistent with this... Let me make sure I read this properly, so there's not any more misinformation. Exactly as it is, but we're going to make sure that it's very clear. The city manager may make rules or regulations, and from time to time amend, revoke, or add rules and regulations, not consistent with this section, as he may deem necessary or expedient in respect to billing for these mitigation rates or collection thereof. To me, that reads like he's just given a free rein to do whatever he wants, no matter what's passed in his ordinance. And this is the ordinance he passed last week, printed straight off y'all's website. So is that the case? He can kind of change whatever he wants to, whenever he wants to?
The city council gave him the authority to set the rules, regulations, and procedures. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so do you have anything else to add?
I've got a list of questions, I'm getting to them. I've got three minutes, I'm trying to hurry.
Well, you've far exceeded your three minutes, so...
What about charging crime victims? You don't feel like that's, you know, victimizing them twice? They're a victim of crime, and then they got to pay again. That's not right. What about you're in a local agreement with the county? If you're going to charge people outside of the city limits, you have an agreement with the county. Does that agreement allow for you to charge those people, since the county's already paying you for that service? Also, is an apartment complex going to be considered commercial? Are they going to be built? Are they going to be considered commercial?
Yes, they're non-residential.
Okay. So that's all the questions I have for now on this, but, you know, it's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Questions from council?
Mayor, one clarification on billing the victims.
Yes.
That was not intended to be billing the victims or the car, if we could criminal call them, just to clarify.
Exactly. Any other questions from council? Comments?
I'm implying that if the driver was in an accident with someone, the driver is a Dennison driver that's responsible, they'd be there to respond to it, not if it was an hours' city, correct?
That's correct. Only out-of-town registered vehicles would be charged.
There wouldn't be an open claim on any of the apartments.
Yes, yes.
Further questions from council? A motion.
Mayor, I need to approve the resolution outlining rules and regulations for the ordinance number 5043 to use for fire service.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hander and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, we bring to you a resolution directing the publication of notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. And I just want to reiterate, this is just a resolution to give us authorization to publish, and the newspaper will be publishing twice for that and posting on the internet. I'm going to kick this off to our city manager, Mr. Rex, and as soon as he's finished giving a little more details about the certificates of obligation, I'll follow up with kind of a timeline and then some good news we received on refunding some additional funds.
Thank you, Renee, Mayor and council. I wanted to give some additional detail about our bond issuances this year. We issue debt each year to help pay for infrastructure improvements throughout the community. This year in particular, as you know, we've been working on a lot of projects, and so we're looking at a significant amount of bond issuance this year. What shows here are the breakdown for the four main bond issuances, including 7.2 million for street improvements, and I'll touch on exactly where that's going here in a minute. 11 million for the downtown project, again, I'll give some more detail on that one as well here in a minute. 8.2 million for water and sewer improvements, and 2.4 million for new ladder truck and fire station number two improvements, which are underway as well. So total, we're looking at new issuances 28.8 million. The street improvements, as you know, there's three major projects that we've been discussing for some time. The 7.2 million includes Flora Lane, Loy Lake Road, and the Waterloo Lake Drive and Lang Avenue improvements near Waterloo Lake Park. The street improvements portion are just for the street improvements, so under the 8.2 million that we're going to issue for water and sewer improvements, that's where we're funding the actual utility improvements for those three street projects. Obviously, we want to include new infrastructure, water, sewer, and drainage underneath before we actually pave the street and create a new street. So we're funding portions of that out of the street improvements and a portion out of CIP. So between the utility improvements for our street projects and the Teresa Waterline Phase II project, that makes up most of the 8.2. There's some additional work on a new water line along 691 that will eventually lead to a water storage tower, and then some minor improvements to our water and wastewater treatment plants as well. I did want to spend a little bit of time on our downtown improvements and really rewind a little bit, and I stole some of these slides from a presentation we gave back in 2016 when we started looking at creating the downtown tax increment reinvestment zone. And so just want to share those briefly for the council and the public as well. So I get asked a lot, what's a TIRS, and why does it have to sound like it does? But it's an acronym, it stands for Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. It's basically a funding tool for public improvements within a specific area of our community. And the way that the state code is written, you can use a tax increment reinvestment zone for new development or for redevelopment areas. We have three TIRS in Dennison. The first two, one is for Gateway Village, the other's for Preston Harbor. Of course, those are both new developments. And our third one is for more redevelopment area around the downtown, and I'll show a map here in a minute that kind of runs through that. So what happens in a TIRS is that it captures all or a portion, you really get to decide that when you create the TIRS, future tax revenue to go towards public improvements within that specific geographic area. And those funds are kept in a TIF or a tax increment fund. I do want to point out, this is not a new tax, it does not change the tax rate, it simply captures new tax revenue from assessed value increases to go towards improvements in that area. This is a tough map to see, you can see a blue outline, though. And this is our TIRS number three area, and this is the area that we're using to fund the improvements on Main Street and then other future improvements as well. We intentionally made it a pretty large area so that we can improve not only the downtown area, but the major corridors leading into downtown, so Morton Street, Armstrong Avenue, Austin Avenue, et cetera. Make improvements to those so that as we improve downtown, we can also improve those corridors as well. And it extends pretty far to the west so that we can capture new value from undeveloped portions of the TIRS area also. So how does a TIRS work? And I give a specific base value number here that's specific to TIRS number three, but in general, this applies to any of our tax increment reinvestment zones. The graph on the right really is helpful if you're graphically inclined, meaning that the very first thing you do in a TIRS is determine what the base value is. So you draw a big map, circle all the properties that are included in there, add up all the assessed value of those properties, and that's what you get for your base value. And all the taxes collected from that base value remain in the general fund, so it doesn't go into a separate fund, into a TIF, but it remains in the general fund to provide city services. And so you always collect that. All three of our TIRS districts were created with a sunset of 30 years, including TIRS number three. Now, the triangle that is called incremental assessed value, any growth above the base is considered increment. And so that is really what you're capturing and putting back into the improvements within that district, is new value in that district that's set aside for improvements. Couple things to point out, you'll remember that in our property tax rate, there's a maintenance and operations portion of that rate, and there's also an interest and sinking fund. Basically, we use property tax revenue for maintenance and operations, the daily operations of the city, and the other portion goes to service debt. The way that a TIRS works is that you only collect for maintenance and operations, that's so that you can continue to pay on your debt using the property tax revenue from that. Now, at the end of a TIRS, what happens? The TIRS is gone, it disappears. All the money and value that's built into that district is captured in the general fund and can be used for anything citywide, not specific to the TIRS. So they do have a sunset date, although it's many years in the future. So for TIRS number three, what do some of those numbers look like? Based on the base value for that district, it was $83.2 million, and so that's the number that we're using to base everything else off of. The 2019 tax value is 130.6 million, so we've seen 57% growth in the district already, which is going to help fund the improvements that we're issuing the bonds for. That makes our increment or our growth, our new value, at 47.5 million. Now, one of the great things about the tax increment reinvestment zone in Texas is that the county can also pledge their revenue from the increased assessed value towards the TIF to go back into the money. So it's kind of like, I compare it to a matching grant, similar to like we got for the Katy Trail. Tech dot, the city puts in 20%, Tech dot puts in 80%. The split's a little different, obviously, with this, but based on fiscal 2020 figures, the city is contributing 63%, the county is pledging 37% of the total money that's going into the TIF for this year. This is, if you like flow charts, this is a good flow chart that can kind of explain it, but so you have assessed value, and we'll call it the increment. So if you go back to the graph, that try... So if you go back to the graph, that triangle area, which is your tax increment, has some value to it. The county has taxes, the city has taxes, and that's our maintenance and operation rate that's there. So the way that we set up TIRS number three is that seventy-five percent of our maintenance and operation revenue goes to the TIF fund. The other twenty-five percent and the base, the eighty-plus million base, goes back to the general fund. So we're still adding to the general fund, but also setting money aside that will go to help fund these improvements. Again, this, I showed this at the last meeting as well that just kind of shows the history of the TIRS fund and how it's grown. We made some projections early on on how the TIRS was gonna perform. And again, we're ahead, about seven-point-eight million dollars ahead of where we thought we would be, which is a positive thing. For fiscal 2020, we anticipate deposits of three-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars into the TIF. One thing I did want to point out is that, I shared this at the last meeting as well. These are the cost estimates for Phase One of the project. They total thirteen million dollars. These are estimates. These are not bids. They're not hard bids. They have lots of contingency built in. This is basically the budget for the project, and it's how we came up with the eleven million dollars to issue the debt off of. So really, the Main Street project and D3 is much more, while there's utilities and infrastructure involved, it's much more like a park project. And so if you recall THF Park, when we built that, okay, there's parking lots. There's also lots of landscaping. There's ballfields. There's playgrounds. The project downtown isn't gonna have playgrounds, but it is gonna have a lot of amenities, benches, fountains. Even the parking lot that's gonna be built in the one-hundred block of Chestnut Street that we recently received the land for, it's gonna be a concrete parking lot. It's also gonna have landscaping. That seven-hundred-thousand-dollar number includes utilities. It includes signage. It includes a fence. It includes dedicated parking for Dennison Police Department. There's a lot packed into that number, and again, it's an estimate. As we get further down the road in the process, we'll get hard bids, and before we actually put a shovel in the ground, know what we're gonna spend for that. So with that total estimated cost of around thirteen million, we're recommending that we use two million out of CIP to go towards the utility improvements in the project. We anticipate coming up with some value engineering and cost cuts over the next few months with our construction manager. And then eventually, we'll, again, we're recommending that we issue eleven million dollars for the project. That will be paid for out of the TIRS. Not a new tax, not pulled from any other funds. It's a bucket of money set aside specifically for this, for this project. So that's how we came up with the eleven million dollars. The one-thousand-seventy-eight dollars in the estimate, I'm sure that we will, I'm confident, I know we will clean that up. It's a rounding error there. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Renee to talk about the bond timeline.
Okay, we are here this evening requesting approval for a resolution to publish a notice of intent to issue the certificates of obligation. Those notices will be published in the newspaper February 26th and March 4th. And then April 20th, we will come before council again requesting to approve this ordinance authorizing issuance of certificates of obligation. And this is on these bonds that we've been talking about for, since probably last April, I believe. Last, but certainly not least, before you vote on that, I just wanted to mention that I've reached out and been discussing with some financial people about refunding or refinancing existing 2010 water sewer bonds. Currently, four-point-two million. Based on what they estimate, we'll have, once we refinance these bonds, refund, and we'll bring to you for approval. But I just wanted to kind of give you some information that we anticipate forty thousand annual savings over the next nine years. So around three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand savings over the next nine years by refinancing these 2010 bonds. Thank you, Renee. Questions?
Mayor, one clarification while we come to the next here. Would you like to give us just a two-second version of the difference between school tax dollars, city tax dollars, and then what people in our extraterrestrial jurisdiction, territorial jurisdiction, sorry, territorial jurisdiction do pay as far as their portion? I mean, there's been a lot of misinformation out there about how our tax dollars are allocated, and maybe we could pull funds from Main Street and build a new school. And so I just want to clear some of that up, because it's been a lot.
Right, right. School taxes and city taxes are separate. That is the, I mean, it's the bottom line. The school, the ISD, is completely separate from the city. We don't co-mingle funds. We don't co-mingle taxes. The city taxes are separate from county taxes, which are separate from the school taxes. We don't co-mingle those. They handle their taxes and their revenue at the ISD level. County handles their taxes at the county level, and then we handle just the Dennison, City of Dennison taxes at this level.
And then on a home owner's or a property owner's tax form, it's actually outlined how much?
Which one of those? Correct. Correct, correct. And we'll probably bring more information to council in the coming months as we talk about tax rates, kind of like we did last year, and outline the different tax rates and who goes where with the ISD and the county and the state, I mean, the city. Okay, you're welcome.
Questions from council for Ms. Wagner?
You're welcome. You're welcome.
No further questions? A motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation.
There is a motion by Councilmember Crowley and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item six, executive session. There is no need for an executive session this evening. So there being no further business to come before this council. The time is six fifty-six, and we are adjourned.